Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
I'd just say welcome to the new council members today for your first meeting. We look forward to getting started. We look forward to building consensus and trust amongst this group and keeping Omaha moving forward. And with that, let's get started.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the meeting act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. The council thanks you for your participation and for attending today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we ask you to please turn off or silence your cell phones. And at this time, we have a presentation and proclamation by Councilmember Johnson.
Where is... Should I go up there?
I think it's okay to read from there.
Okay. All right. Whereas the Emancipation Proclamation was signed by President Abraham Lincoln on January 1st, 1863, declaring all that all persons held as slaves in the Confederate territories were free, and whereas news about the Emancipation Proclamation did not reach enslaved African-Americans in the southern and southwestern states until two and a half years later on June 19th, 1865, and whereas in 1997 Senate Joint Resolution 11 and House Joint Resolution 56 passed the United States Congress and officially recognized the Juneteenth Independence Day, and whereas June 19, which became known as Juneteenth, is the oldest known celebration commemorating the end of slavery in America and is a celebration of African-American freedom and triumph, and whereas the city council will continue its work to make Juneteenth an official holiday for all city employees so that they may spend this momental monumental day celebrating and remembering the significance of June 19. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Omaha City Council joins with the community in celebrating this important holiday, recognizing Saturday, June 19, 2021, to be Juneteenth. In witness whereof, the Omaha City Council has caused the official seal of the City of Omaha to be affixed on this eighth day of June 2021. This proclamation will be issued to three outstanding organizations that were primarily involved and have a significant history in the African-American community, more importantly, North Omaha. They are Vicki Young with the NAACP, and the other two entities are not present at this time, but they will receive their proclamations as well. Thank you, Ms. Young, for your contribution as well as your organization contributions to Omaha and the City of Omaha greatly appreciate all of your efforts and your organization's efforts. So, thank you again.
Thank you, and I see we have representatives of the Malcolm X site here, too, and I believe it's your intention to present that proclamation at a ceremony that day at that location as well, right?
That is correct.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Adam Clerk.
Items six and seven can be considered together for Rainwood Industrial Park located southwest of Blair High Road and Rainwood Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item six, resolution to approve the preliminary plat. Item seven, a resolution to approve a waiver to the present development zone specifications of the urban development element of the City of Omaha master plan.
Thank you. Public hearing and vote on these items is today. We have the proponents here. Mr. Jobin.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council. Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant McGill Restoration Inc. First of all, I want to congratulate all the council members and look forward to working with all of you over the next four years. With that, this is an industrial development between Blair High Road and 120th Street along Rainwood Road on the north side. It's 143 acres. There's 23 proposed lots to be developed in two phases. Again, it comes due with the favorable recommendations from the department as well as the planning board, so I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponents here today that want to speak? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items six and seven are approved, seven to zero. Items eight through 11 can be considered together for the Rosa Coventry located southwest of 207th and Q Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item eight, an ordinance to rezone this property from MU District to R6 District. Item nine, an ordinance to approve a PUD overlay district in R6 District and to approve the development plan. Item 10, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 11, a resolution to approve subdivision agreement.
Thank you. Public hearing and vote are on these items today. We have the applicant.
Afternoon. Jason Thielen, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 1009 Mill Valley Road, Suite 100 in Omaha here on behalf of the applicant. This must be new.
Yeah, on the top there, yeah.
There we go. All right. Haven't seen you all in a long time. Congratulations to the new council members. I'm not down there as much as I used to be, but maybe I get to be going forward. Today, I'm presenting the Rosa Coventry, which is a 179-watt subdivision for townhouses roughly at 207th and Q Street. Q Street being at the north, 207th Street. It's about an 18 and 1/2-acre site. This will be a for-sale product at this location. Each unit will be on its own lot. The goal of this project is to bring some affordable housing into this area. For those that have been paying attention to the housing market, it's gotten quite high, and so density is a way to combat that, and that's the goal here with this project. Each one of these units is a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, two-car unit. Like I said, on its own lot. They'll vary in color throughout the neighborhood. Sixplexes, a couple of sevenplexes, and a few fourplexes located on the site. Design of this project was thought through. This is being zoned as R6 PUD with R5 site regulator, so we could fit somewhere around 270 units on this site. We're only asking for 179, which is about 12 units per acre. We could go as high as 14 and 1/2 units per acre on this site. Thought through one of the neighborhood-type feel and look. You can see each one of these buildings is turned perpendicular towards all the public streets as well as the outlot that faces the Coventry Estate homes that are adjacent to this project. The idea being that all the garages, none of the garages will face the public way, and we're building these streets as they're private roadways built to public standards, but they'll feel like a parkway. They've got double-loaded trees along both sides, heavily landscaped buffer along the back, and then required landscaping along Q Street and on 207th Street. Let's see here. There's a middle green space here for the residents to use, dog park, maybe some different type of amenities there. They haven't quite decided on all of that. And there's currently a daycare that's programmed into this project at this location right here. We've been working with the neighborhood HOA next door since about September of 2020. We've worked through a lot of the issues and concerns of that HOA and come together hopefully today to with a letter of support from the HOA, and I think they've got a representative here that hopefully will echo that. The apartment owners that are next to us, we've worked with them. They're very happy with the project. The overall developer, CFM, that did Coventry is excited about the project. One of their asks was to mirror the landscaping along 207th Street to mirror what they have on the other side with the apartments. And so that's a double row of trees and some additional landscaping outside the right-of-way, plus this press point fence that runs down 207th Street. And so we agreed, and we've complied with that, and are doing the same landscaping on both sides of 207th Street to make a coordinated entrance into the subdivision. That is one of the main entrances into the subdivision. So that is good. We went to Planning Board on November 4th of 2020, and then we went on to the ZBA for some waivers, the way that we put the zoning together, and January 6th of '21 unanimous approval at both Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals. We had recommendations of approval. We agreed to those, and we've satisfied those. It's my understanding, we met last week quick with the neighborhood. There was a few additional trees that they wanted to be added to the landscape planned. They didn't make it on the landscape plan. There's an amendment tonight before you. That's what it is for. It is for three additional trees along U Street for the neighbors so that they can have some coordinated effort coming into their neighborhood at this location here. After your approval today, and be happy to answer any questions you might have.
And I believe that amendment you described is amendment, amendment number nine today, right?
Yes, correct.
So council members, that would need to be amended separately from other votes. Any other proponents here today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. You have to, as amended.
Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 12, an ordinance to rezone property located at 2303 and 2307 South 20th Street from GC District to R4 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 12 is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 12 is approved, seven to zero. Item 13, an ordinance to rezone property located at 5715 M Street from DR District to R4 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 13 is today. I know we have our applicant by Zoom, Scott Luce. Okay, Mr. Luce, your name and address, please. If you're talking, you're on mute right now. Okay, if staff works on that, why don't we see if there's anyone in the room who might be a proponent that wants to speak? Is there anyone in the room who's an opponent that wants to speak? Seeing none, we'll give it one more second, and I see Mr. Palermo has his light on. Okay.
Yeah, sure, we'll give him time to chime in.
Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. We did have a late email coming in for opposition on agenda item 13. I spoke to the people who were opposed to it, and with the help of the planning director, I think their opposition wasn't the zoning change, it was a question on property line. So we directed those in attendance that did show up but have left already in the right direction. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. So it sounds like that matter's resolved that you handled, and I'm sure the applicant is favorable to that, who are waiting on for Zoom, still not available?
I would have no problem. I'd move to approve it.
Yeah. There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 13 is approved, seven to zero. Item 14, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate into that district the property located at 9004 Fourth Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote are today on number 14. I think we also have the applicant by Zoom, Mr. Krieger. We'll give that one more second. All right, Mr. Krieger, your name and address, please.
I'm with 11 Talents on 13575 Lyndham Drive. I was actually item number 13, but I was unable to get through to you. So I no longer need anything you guys pass me, so I'm okay.
Nice job. Thanks for your patience. All right, are there any other proponents on item number 14 that want to speak today? Seeing none, are there any opponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Items 15 and 16 can be considered together for property located at 655 North 108th Avenue. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 15 is an ordinance to rezone this property from CC District to R8 District. Item 16, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the ACI III overlay district to incorporate this property into that district.
Public hearing and vote on number 15 and 16 are today. We'll hear from the applicant first.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also like to welcome all the new council members. Bradley Hike with TD2 Engineering, 10836 Old Mill Road. Here on behalf of the applicant, this is a project to rezone from CC to R8 in order to convert a hotel in the Old Mill area to an assisted living facility. And with that, I'd be here to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Are there any proponents on 15 and 16? Seeing none, any opponents? Seeing none, Ms. Melton.
Oh, thank you. I just want to make a comment. I know this kind of borders on mine and your district, President Festerson, but this is a great project because we have had a lot of hotels that have struggled and have closed, especially over the last year during the pandemic. So we're taking a property that could become a kind of an eyesore, especially for that area and especially in that Old Mill area, and making it a senior living facility. I think not only does it benefit the area, it's got another use for the property, but also provides a service of having a place where we can have that independent living that is much needed in this community. So I know that there was some struggles, and this may have been a little delayed trying to get this through, but I'm glad everything worked out. I know I spoke to the owner-developer who was trying to get this through, and I'm really happy to see that you're here and that it didn't fall, and that that didn't fall through and that you're proceeding with it. So I'd please extend that to the owners, developers that I had spoke to, you know, earlier, I think.
Yeah, thank you.
This early December.
I'll pass that along to them.
Okay. With that, I would motion to approve. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second, and I'll officially close public hearing. Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 15 and 16 are approved, seven to zero. Item 17, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow resource extraction in the AG District for property located southwest of 252nd and West Center Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 17 are today. The applicant, please.
Honorable President, members of the city council. My name's Jimmy Lowe. I'm at 11252 Aurora Avenue in Des Moines, 50322. I'm a land manager with Martin Marietta Materials. I'm here to respectfully request your review and approval of a special use permit to allow resource extraction in the Ag District for a property, an 80-acre property on West Center Road and 252nd Street in the River Valley. So this property... This is the subject property here, and it is immediately adjacent. This is owned by TXI Operations LP, which is a Martin Marietta subsidiary, and it's directly adjacent to a currently operating sand and gravel pit, which Martin Marietta operates. So in essence, the mining operation would be the same as currently exists at West Center Sand, but we would take the dredge tethered to the current production facility, which exists right here, and we would mine out that subject property, essentially making one large pond by the end of the mining property. Truck traffic would remain the same, would come in here and out there, and the property itself is currently... It's currently a sod farming operation. So the sod farming operation would mine, or they would harvest the rest of their sod northwards from south to north. This is their last harvest that they're going to do. They're not going to plant any more crop, and we would come in this way and mine eastward, and then northward concurrently. The sod farming operation is proposed to be in operation for approximately the next three years, and our mining operation for the special use permit would be approximately five years of sand and gravel extraction. We agree, we went through Planning Department review and public hearing. We agree with the recommendations and have submitted a revised operations plan. One of the primary things, recommendations from planning staff, is there is an entrance right there, a field entrance that currently exists. They were concerned about traffic on the corner of 252nd and West Center Road. We've agreed, Martin Marietta has agreed not to use that access during any portion of the permitted timeline, but the sod operation can continue to use it until their operation concludes. Furthermore, we will permanently remove that access point at the conclusion of the sod farming operation. With that, I open myself up to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 18, to consider a Class I liquor license for Bravo Caccina at Telliano located at 17151 Davenport Street, Suite 101, Building M.
Public hearing and vote on number 18 is today. The applicant, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Tim O'Neil with O'Neil Heinrich in Lincoln, Nebraska. Here on behalf of the applicant and seeking your approval of Class I liquor license. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and nice to see you again and nice to meet you.
Thanks. And your address for the record, too?
Oh, excuse me. It's 800 Lincoln Square, 121 South 13th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents today on number 18? Seeing none, any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 19, to consider a Class A liquor license application for a cocoa chicken located at 2571 South 177th Plaza.
Public hearing and vote on number 19 is today, and we have the applicant by Zoom. There we go. Your name and address for the record, please. You're almost off mute. There you go.
Hello, good afternoon. This is Nan Xiao. The address is 2571 South 177 Plaza, 68130, and we are applying for the liquor license. The type is A. We took over the restaurant of Five Spies, which had been running that restaurant for eight years there, and they hold the same liquor license, so we want to continue, but we want to provide the same service to the customers in this area. And for this type of the liquor license, it will be only in the dining-in area, and we will follow all the rules, such as the health regulation or inspections, and we will to sell the beers only inside the restaurant, and we will keep all the records for the liquor, the quantity of the beers. So I hope you can approve our application. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Are there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, any opponents? Seeing none. Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Good luck.
Item 20, to consider an addition application for Mula located at 3932 Farnham Street to add an outdoor area approximately 20 feet by 28 feet.
Public hearing and vote on number 20 is today. The applicant, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Sammy Padavina, General Manager of Mula, 3932 Farm Street, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thanks.
Item 21, to consider a special designated liquor license application for the Broke Down Palace located at 8805 Maple Street for an outdoor music festival on June 24th through 26th from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. with music ending at midnight each night with an alternate date and location of Sunday, June 27th, 2021, at the Shakedown Street Tavern located at 2735 North 62nd Street from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. with music ending at midnight.
Public hearing and vote on number 21 is today. The applicant, please.
Yeah, my name is Ross Colley, K-O-L-E-Y, in 8805 Maple Street, Omaha, 68134.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close public hearing. Ross, I just had a few questions for you. This is in my district, and I know you've had several events there that have, I think, gone pretty well. I will say, though, I've received a few neighborhood concerns recently, a few weeks back, about a couple of events, so I wanted to just talk to you about that a little bit. And I think it was mostly around some noise complaints and some issues like that, so I'm wondering if you might be amenable to doing any music at 11 as opposed to 12?
We're absolutely open to that. We do have space inside. That space is somewhat limited. We feel it's safer to do it outside. If we have to end at 11, that's something we are prepared to do. I believe one of the neighbors that had an issue was Mr. Martins, who's directly to the south of where our, be the backside of our stage. I think one of the, so this will be our seventh event doing this, and the previous event, I know that the other five didn't raise any issues. The last event, the stage was, I was out of town, so there was a mix-up with the sound and lighting director, and our stage happened to be pointed to the west in And our stage happened to be pointed to the west instead of to the north. And with you being kind of familiar with our location, I think that was definitely a big reason in why there was some complaints raised with our last event. So one thing I did want to point out is that the stage this time is going to be moved about, I would say, twenty to thirty feet from its previous location to the north, and also will be pointing north. So I just wanted to make you aware of that change, so.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, and I think your previous events did go well, so I was surprised to get the emails that I got. But I'm glad you're thinking about it that way.
Yeah.
If you think that it can be handled that way, I'd be willing to.
Yeah, I think one other thing I'd just like to point out, there's a, there's a new neighbor to the south of Mr. Martins. And I think, I believe that they had an issue, so me and my co-owner approached them a couple of weeks ago and just let them know when the event was. They do have two small children, so we offered to put them up for a hotel for the weekend if they chose to do that. There's also seven or eight neighbors within, it's kind of an L stretch there from eighty-fifth street, and then I believe it's Miami is the street to the north. So we've also offered all of them tickets that they would like to go to. Just to try to, you know, we don't want to upset anyone in our neighborhood if we, if we can.
Yeah, I appreciate you reaching out to them and having discussions. And there, is there also an outstanding issue with your landlord or how that, how's that?
Yeah, there was. So my landlord, for lack of a better term, strong-armed me into amending. Basically, I had to add three years to my lease in order to gain his approval for these events. Like I said, this is our seventh one, so it's not something new that we've been doing. All of this happening after a pandemic where our sales were down fifty percent last year, so. It's something, if we are allowed to do these events, I don't see any reason we wouldn't be there for three more years. So it's an option that we exercised.
Okay. Well, having had this dialogue.
And I just, sorry to interrupt, but I do have in writing from him now for the duration of our lease. With our catering license, we are now allowed twelve calendar events, and I do have that in writing just in case that's needed, so.
Okay, so a maximum of twelve per year?
Yeah.
Which should be in the summertime or fall?
Yeah, just per calendar year, we're allowed up to twelve under the catering license we have now at, at one location, so.
Okay. Well, having had this dialogue, it makes me feel a little bit better, and I'm glad you're thinking about ways to handle the concerns about noise. And I'd be willing to keep this event as it is one more time, but relying upon you to make sure that happens and that you do handle the concerns of the neighbors?
Sure. I mean, we want to be a good neighbor there, so.
Yeah, okay. I appreciate that, and I will not amend it today and will move forward as proposed for this next event.
Thank you, President.
Is there a motion? Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Public hearing on agenda items twenty-two through twenty-four were held on May twenty-fifth. Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items number twenty-five through forty-five are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Looks like we have some folks coming down, maybe?
Greetings, city council members. Mr. President, my name is Edian, in specific to item twenty-five. I'm sorry.
Your address, too, please.
Yes, address is forty-nine zero nine south one thirty-fifth street, suite one thirteen. M N C Management Doing Businesses Local Beer Patio Kitchen.
Great, thank you. Here to answer any questions?
Yes, yeah, any questions you have, yeah.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Anyone else intend to speak on these items? I think we do have someone by Zoom for number twenty-seven. Just here to answer questions, it sounds like? Okay. And number forty-one, too. Cassie Barrett, would you like to speak to item number forty-one? Okay, your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Cassie Barrett. My address is nineteen forty-one south forty-second, and I'm just here to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Public hearings are closed. Oh, Luis, go ahead.
Luis Jimenez, thirty-three oh six Birch Street. Sorry, I was confused when you asked for proponents. I am a proponent for item thirty. This is a purchasing and authorization for the purchase order for a street sweeper. I think that the streets need to be swept more often. So I think that adding to the, adding more equipment is essential to maintain the streets. I know that the city is doing resurfacing. In twenty nineteen, there was a lot of resurfacing along the Parker Street area. And, and then also now along thirtieth street, and that is important. I appreciate what the, what Public Works is doing. It does uplift the community, I think, when you got smooth streets. But then you get like this rubbish from vegetations, like sticks and rocks that gather that need to be swept more often, I think. And if you guys can find money or send out more sweepers, I think that'd be nice. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else intend to speak on these items? Yeah, please come down.
Good afternoon. My name is Frederick Franklin, and I am here on, on behalf of item number forty-three. Congratulations, first of all, to the new council members. I'm with the Franklin Law Group, and I represent O O I C with respect to their attempt to acquire land owned by the city in furtherance of a, of an overall transaction where the, the adjacent land that the city has is owned by O O I C. And we have secured a buyer to purchase the entire parcel in a cash deal, no contingencies, no TIF money, no bank financing. And it results in essentially a windfall from any reasonable perspective to the city of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The prospective buyer is a native Omaha who now resides in California and apparently has the financial wherewithal to, to develop that particular property, to take it out of, out of its problem status. And what I mean by that is that the city has had to have maintenance people go by and do repairs and, and yard work and that kind of thing. And so if you guys would approve this particular transaction, my expectation is that we will be able to close on this particular property sometime in, in very short order, given the fact that it doesn't involve any, any financing. And, and the buyer has indicated, an indication, he's indicated that he's ready to, to get it up and running and to cease being a problem for the city as soon as possible. So I do ask you to approve what is proposed here.
Great.
I'm open to any questions.
Thanks for your testimony.
Thank you.
Anyone else intend to speak on these items? Seeing none, I will, I will go ahead and close public hearing. Council members? Is there a motion? Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item forty-six, in ordinance transferring funds from unencumbered balances in the twenty twenty general fund budget of the city of Omaha is amendment of the whole requested by the finance department.
The vote on number forty-six is today with amendment of the whole. The amendment of the whole? Same second? Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item forty-seven, in ordinance authorizing issuance of a purchase order to build in glass ink for emergency glass repair and replacement at various Omaha locations, city of Omaha locations.
Public hearing on number forty-seven is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item forty-eight, in ordinance to approve the Nebraska Crime Commission Fiscal Year twenty twenty Stop Violence Against Women Grant Award in the amount of two hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars, eighteen cents.
Public hearing on number forty-eight is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed.
Item forty-nine, in ordinance to approve the contracts with Thompson Reuters to provide specialized books and services to the law department.
Public hearing on number forty-nine is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed.
Item fifty, in ordinance to accept the bid of Toughworks in the total amount of thirty-six thousand dollars for the purchase of four used Jacobson L F five fifty fairway mowers.
Public hearing on number fifty is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item fifty-one, in ordinance to accept the bid of Cashew and the total amount of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred dollars for food concessions and supplies for the city of Omaha parks.
Public hearing on number fifty-one is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Non-action items, items fifty-two through sixty-one do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn? Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at two forty-one.